I call the December 17, 2013 County Commissioner Meeting to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge led by KJ Peterson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone wish any changes made to the agenda? I would mention that if at a point, depending on how the meeting progresses, we may need to shift a couple of items in order to take advantage of Commissioner Troutman's presence. And so as we go along, we'll watch the clock and see how we get along. Do we have a motion relative to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented, Mr. Chair.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hinnies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for today contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of December 3, 2013. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $3,309,369.30. Approval of the lease agreement for rooms at the PRM Cota Hotel for the 2014 legislative session. To appoint Mr. Gerald Volmer to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission for a four-year term. To approve the 2014 agreement to extend the contract for indigent representation with Dakota Plains Legal Services. And finally, approval of the memorandum of understanding with the City of Rappa City for snow removal as submitted by the Highway Department.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
To make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 11, County Highway Road Maintenance Recognition for the Wall area. And we have Mr. Randy Walker here representing the Highway Department from Wall. He's the foreman. And in this explanation of this, a few weeks ago, several of us made a private tour in the northern reaches of eastern Pennington County. Lots of miles of gravel road, very challenging road. The topography causes that to be so. And given the fact that the blizzard put up quite a few challenges to that department, I was amazed at the degree of maintenance on that road. It was highly maintained and very travelable, and it could only have happened because of the good work of the Wall crew. And so Randy, if you would, I'm going to take the privilege of presenting the certificate to you from the commission. And if you have any comments, we'd appreciate it.
All of the Commissioners have signed this and wish to express congratulations to the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you very much. Wouldn't be done without my crew. I want to thank them for this. They're making me look good.
And I knew we think maybe you had some, something to do with that, too. Next item is item 12, Resolution of Necessity for the Purchase of Memorial Park Apartments. Who wishes to speak?
I'm going to take the shorter mic. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, we're delighted to be here this morning. Mr. Olson, our attorney's here if you have any questions, but we're here for the approval of the necessity for the housing authority.
Thank you. Mr. Olson, do you have any comments?
Only here to answer questions if there are any. Thank you.
Smart lawyer.
Mr. Chair, to shorten the situation up, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of necessity.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the resolution of necessity. Any further remarks? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. So now we're ahead of schedule.
Could we do the bid award?
What?
Could we do the bid award for the Sheriff's Bus?
Do you wish to move to item 15?
Yeah, could we do that?
Why not? Any objection? Do we need a motion, Karen?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to consider item 15 at this time in the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to consider item 15 at this time. Where is it? Yes, we're ready.
Good morning. Kevin Dome, Pentic County Sheriff. If you recall, the last couple of meetings, we've put some money into reserve for the, a special reserve for purchase of a new transport bus, which we use twice a week. It goes across the state every Tuesday and Thursday from here over to the penitentiary and back. And this is replacing the one that had 960-some thousand miles on it. We, we sent it out to, find my sheet here. It went to six different transport companies that responded to our request for proposal. And two of them responded. One was MCI, which is a transport bus company out of North Dakota. And the second one was Masters Transportation. And we're going to recommend that we accept the Motor Coach Industries, MCI, for $549,696 in that Masters Transportation did not meet the, all the specs. And I want, Captain Graves is bringing over the spec sheet as to what specs they didn't meet. Here, I'll grab that real quick. And the delivery time on the bus from MCI is about a year out. Hey, Marty, I'll get the chase here.
Yeah, I broke down this last week.
I'm going to ask, Captain Graves is the one that coordinated the purchase, and he has the spec sheet from Masters Transportation. Their bid was 236,000, but again, it wasn't even close to the terms of specs that we wanted. You know, we, we requested a bus like this for the, because it meets our needs. The, as you know, the last one had 900-some thousand miles on it, so these are high-use vehicles. And the one that Masters Transportation bid isn't the equivalent in terms of the high use that we have. And Captain Graves can give you some of the specs that they didn't meet.
Some of the specific things that we had requested was the dual-axle capacity. This bus does not have a dual-axle capacity. It just has a single axle on the back part of that. Fuel capacity for going across the state, we requested 140-gallon capacity. This bus only has 40 to 50-gallon capacity, so it would limit our access across the state driving back and forth. So that was kind of the two highlighted areas that didn't meet the request that we'd put in for our specifications.
And this one would be fine if you were doing more regionalized transportation, but for going back and forth across the state twice a week like we do and running up the mileage, it just wouldn't hold up. So those are the two bids we had. Certainly stand for any questions you have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. It's been breaking down a lot what we have, and we've got a whole year. Can they?
It was a timeline delivery.
Sort that out?
This was September. This one right here? This was 160 days. This one was September. September 2014 is, if we get the bid right away, we can get it in September.
About 10 months. They build them once the orders, if the bid's awarded.
270 days, is that correct?
Yeah. And I had talked to the manager there, and he said that if we can get the bid in, they could probably, they might be able to move that up a little bit, a little closer, so.
This one will be equipped pretty much like the newer bus that you got now?
Just like the one that we bought in 2009. It's the same MCI bus, exactly.
I'd make a motion to approve the, awarding the contract to MCI for a 2014 transport bus, $549,696. And that's all coming out of your budget, right?
Well, actually, 48,000 of it will, the rest will come out of the special reserve that we set out. So we will take 48,000 out of our 2014 budget to make up the difference.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
There is, Mr. Chair. Kevin, the money's all in the bank, correct? To pay for this, you don't have to do any supplements or anything?
Right, well, we'll have to do a supplement next year. You took the almost 500,000, put into a special reserve, and we actually buy the bus next year, I assume. KJ, correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll have to put that into a, we'll supplement it in 2014 to pay the money from the reserves for the bus. Is that correct?
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we're back on schedule. Item 13.
Good morning. KJ Peterson, Chief Deputy Auditor. 13A is a posted supplement for the General Fund Public Defender budget. This will be coming from unassigned fund balance. Earlier in the year, the board approved some additional FTEs that were hired in the second half of the year, and also included some setup for the equipment that those attorneys needed. And the letter from Eric Witcher is attached along with the budget's report indicating the line items where that he will need that $60,000 to be placed in his budget before the end of the year.
I see, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I see our Public Defender is, is here. I see that it says we, you had extraordinary expense because you had a deaf client charged with rape. I know where you can get an interpreter pretty cheap.
Are you volunteering?
I had to fill that in. That's the funniest thing I've seen on TV in years.
We'll have to bring him from South Africa, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of an expense.
Did you have any comment? Would you identify yourself if you're going to comment?
Very good. Eric Witcher, Public Defender.
If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the supplement to the General Fund Public Defender budget for a total of $60,000 from unassigned fund balance.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item.
These are the public hearing for alcohol beverage license renewals. These have been published, and the fees have been paid. And the motion would be to approve the renewal for the Gaslight, Mount Rushmore KOA, Silver Dollar Saloon, and Summer Creek Inn.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve it, just so we can discuss it.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Is, is there not a requirement that there has to be facility before you can get a license? The Gaslight?
Actually, if they don't renew the license, even though there is no facility, then they would lose it.
You sure?
Yep. I can go get Vicki, but there was discussion, of course, there's not, there's this one, and was there another one that, that?
One of mine is here.
Was.
Well, was it the fireside? I mean, they aren't open, the building's there.
Yeah, the same thing is true there. The even, they, they own the license, so even though they're not operating, and you know, we have some of them that only operate in the summer, so they still have to renew right now, because if they don't renew right now, then they lose it.
One year.
If I remember right, they have to reopen one day a year, I think, for that. I believe that's what happened.
So we, we give licenses to property, not to people? No, I guess we give it to people.
Of course, because it can be transferred, so.
I think Holly wants to.
Turn around.
Be back here shortly.
Oh, did you go get her?
That's all I did.
Becomes the expert.
Just clarification on the issuance of the Gaslight, since there is no building there right now.
They have to renew it. It, it'll be considered inactive. It'll be, they can do that for two years, and that keeps them their license. If they don't renew it, they lose the license, and they have to buy it from the very beginning again.
And they have to operate, too. They can't just renew their license.
No, for two years, it's an inactive status. So they, the first year, they do not have to have any sales tax, no nothing, to satisfy the state side of it. After a year, they have that year to start using sales tax, so it goes into the system.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Did we have a motion? We do have a motion and a second. So with that, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item.
Item C is updated information on the Winter Storm Atlas budget. I believe Alexa's here. Oh, yes, she is. Good, good. And we'll probably need her. But just to quickly update the board on the fact that there was what they called a kickoff meeting with FEMA and people from the state as well outlining the documentation requirements of expenses. It was clear within a short beginning of that meeting that the regular salaries were, would not qualify because we are closing in on our budget year. We transferred all those salaries, regular salaries, back. We moved the highway salaries back over, and they're all included in the detail of the highway report here. We still have some payables that will occur before the end of the year. Right now, we're at $178,425 with about 25,000 in payables in the Emergency Disaster Fund. And we are at about $214,480 in the Highway Fund with approximately 36,914 in payables left to pay, which would now bring the cost to Pennington County to $454,819. That is on report number eight, which is the second to the last page in the packet that Holly provided to you. And the one that I'm going to focus on right now, just to outline the total expenses without the regular pay, those have all been charged back to the normal salary line items in the respective budgets. If we were to, in fact, go through this entire FEMA review and every expense was qualified, there's a lot of detailed information that they'll be going to the individual departments for, for those expenses. But I just referred that back to straight 75% FEMA reimbursement, 10% from the state, which would leave the county funds, if the full amount of the expenses I've outlined were to fall into the reimbursement qualifications, at $68,222.
KJ, and that's on report number eight?
Report number eight, which should be the second to the last. Eight and nine are really the, the two that you might want to look at, unless you have specific questions about the details of expenses. I can sure help with salaries, and Alexa can help you identify if you have any other questions. But going to eight is where I outlined the total expenses. And assuming we reimburse equally at the 7510, leaves us at the 68222. I'd mentioned at the last meeting, there's approximately $299,000 in the Emergency, Emergency Disaster Fund. There was 90,000 in contingency. We did a supplement for some insurance, but we still have 82,000 remaining in the 2013 contingency. And I know specifically Commissioner Holloway had asked about the balance in the Emergency Management Fund, and so that's what report number nine is, outlines where they expect to be at the end of the year, and also indicates some future expenses for the new building If that were to occur, there would be a negative balance. This does not include the reimbursement yet from FEMA, though.
So we've taken all the regular hourly wages out. We're just charging overtime hours.
There's a very small amount of, of regular time, and in highway, there will probably be some once they determine the substance of the job as it relates to like tree removal as opposed to snow removal.
And I noted on the sheriff and the search and rescue, they had repairs for their equipment that, that broke down, or they had damage during the storm. On the Highway Department, though, I see we're charging rent for all of that equipment? And I'm assuming that's your own equipment, not an equipment that you went out and rented?
Yes, Heine, Jungu, Penning County Highway Superintendent. Yes, according to accounting standards that we have to abide by through the state, all our equipment is rented back to our projects. We look at our fuel costs and our repair costs, and at the end of the year, we come up with a rental rate. So whether we're working paving a road, or graveling a road, or whatever we doing, we always rent our equipment back to that project. So when it comes to FEMA, we can't use our own rates. We have to use the FEMA rates, and most of our rates are pretty close to what FEMA allows. So yes, we rent the equipment back to the snow removal.
But when you put your budget together at the, for, for the upcoming year, you put all of this expense to operate tho, that equipment or replace the equipment in your budget?
Yes.
It's just in a county.
It's different line items. Yeah, I have a line item for parts and a line item for cutting edges and a line item for fuel.
Yep.
That's all built in separate, different line items, but when we charge back out, it's based on a rental rate on past year's history.
Any other questions or comments?
My thought, as it relates to the rental of the equipment, that we should not be asking the federal government and the state government to reimburse us for our own vehicles that we, that we budget to operate. And it's no different than what the sheriff or even search and rescue. I mean, we've bought those vehicles for those people. They use them. I would, I would agree if they, if they broke down or they need to get them repaired as a result of this storm, maybe that's a, maybe that is an expense we ought to try to get reimbursed. But just, just to ask to have, to charge rent for the vehicles that we own to do this work for the citizens of this county, I think is, is, is wrong. I don't think we ought to be doing it. And if, I don't know if we have to vote on this at some point in time, but if we have to vote on it, I'm going to vote against it if we keep that in there.
Anything further? You don't require any action today, do you?
I would request one motion, and that motion would be to supplement the Emergency Management Storm Atlas budget in the amount of $203,425. This is not a posted supplement and does not have to be, as I indicated. There is a South Dakota statute that allows the, the board to supplement for an unanticipated disaster. The expenses in the highway have been absorbed into what was the original 2013 budget due to some different expenses not occurring in this year. But there was obviously no budget for the Storm Atlas expenses. And so in order to close the books at the end of the year, I would request that motion. That doesn't address, at this point, it's all coming out of Emergency Management, as I've indicated. And I guess I would leave it to discussion with Emergency Management officials and the board as to what, if any or all, they choose to request reimbursement for the storm from both FEMA and the state. The actual determination of that will not, is not something that, that will affect the closing of the books for 2013. The cash that was spent is gone. The supplement would be covered, and whether the board decided to request all or part of those expenses to be reimbursed could be discussed with those Emergency Management people.
KJ, just one other, one other question. On the cot, on report number four, which is the Highway Department's job cost detail of Storm Atlas expense, there is regular hours in that, but you pulled those out.
They're, they're not in the Storm Atlas budget? You're right. I've pulled all of them out.
You pulled all of those out. But the rest of it is, all the equipment rental and?
No, no. Everything related to highway is in report number four. That includes regular overtime salaries and all the equipment rentals and gas and, and all of those expenses.
But you didn't use that figure when you're, when you're, you pulled all the regular hours out of that report?
We initially had charged the salaries to Emergency Management. We moved everything back. It's all in the highway, so that.
I guess what I, I understand, you moved all the salaries back into the departments, but what I'm trying to understand is, are we asking the federal government? but what I'm trying to understand is, are we asking the federal government to reimburse us for those regular hours?
I don't think that that's been determined by anyone at this point.
Well, it has with the, with the sheriff. You're only asking for overtime hours, right? Uh, and, and emergency management's not asking for any salaries, are you?
There's a, a small amount of regular salaries for a, uh-
For that one person that they brought in, yeah.
A meeting with the FEMA representative, or the, our account representative with FEMA this afternoon at one-thirty, uh, federal, uh, federal administration has changed the way they look at debris removal. They will pay regular hours for debris removal. And we did have some of it that occurred during the storm to get trees out of the way so we could plow snow. So there was some regular time, and that will be determined how much of that would be allowed, if any, uh, this afternoon when I meet with, with our account representative from FEMA.
I'm not as concerned about what the federal government will allow because ship, they'll give, I'm sorry, apologies. They'll, they'll give all the money away that they can give. I mean, they just love to give money away. Wha- what I'm concerned about is what we, as responsible people, should be asking the federal government to assist us in.
Well, if I would see a reduction in my income tax that I pay to help pay for Sandy and everybody else that turned it down, or the Secure Rural Roads funding, that's went from six hundred thousand down to a hundred and some thousand, yeah, maybe we wouldn't accept it, but-
But, but Heine, if, if everybody always continues to think that way, then we ought to, everybody should, should stop complaining about how much the federal government spends. And, and, uh, you know, that's the problem. That's the problem, because there's a lot of other people have the same philosophy as you. Everybody else is getting it, so I should get it too. I don't personally agree with that.
If not, uh, the-
I, I, I'm sorry, I, I do have one thing. I mean, I don't, I surely don't have a problem supplementing emergency management. Where's the two hundred and three?
It's the one seventy-eight, four twenty-five.
Yeah, but where's it coming from?
It's currently coming out of the emergency, um, management fund.
Okay, nevermind, that's good.
And, uh, assuming we'll get s- a seventy-five plus ten back of that.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to supplement emergency management and for, in an amount of two hundred and three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair. I, I'm still not clear as, when, when do we, as a board, get to make a decision whether or not we're going to ask for rental of our equipment and regular hour pay for employees to be reimbursed by the federal government? When do we get to make that decision? Or don't we get to make it? The, the department has just submitted and, and, uh, whatever the federal government wants to give away, they can give away.
Alexa White, emergency management. I would just, we will go through the process with the FEMA representative and the people that are specifically going to go through each receipt that we've submitted, each, uh, amount of regular overtime, whatever we submit, and they will tell us what we can and what we can't claim. At that point, if we want to come back before the board, we could say, here are the items that are approved, because the amount that you have in front of you is still a little bit, we're not sure if it's all, you know, able to be claimed for it will count, or you can't use this, can't use that. But based on what we know, this is, we captured everything so that we would have it, and it wouldn't be lost, because going back two months from now, you know, three months from now would be difficult to get that information accurate. So at that point, we can come back before you and say, here are the things that we are allowed to claim, we are, you know, approved that we can claim, and then the board could decide, don't use this, don't use that, but use the rest, or, you know, however you want to do it.
So just because they're going to review it and, and decide what we can claim, uh, we're not submitting the claim at that time?
No, I, I believe that we, we can say, we need to go through this and find out what we can claim, can claim, and then we will come back before the commission to get a final approval. There's, there's not going to be like a check written two weeks from the date that we go through this. It's, you know, it's going to take six to eight months to kind of get through the process for them to get through all of the entities in the county who have submitted for public assistance, which Pennington County is one of those entities.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I kind of, I, I agree partially with, with, uh, Don. I think we need to probably decide it today, because if, if we're not going to do it, why, why would we have you and FEMA sit down and waste your time talking about something that we're not going to do anyway? That doesn't make any sense. I'm, I'm all in favor. I can tell you where I, my feeling is that we don't need to be reimbursed for, for the regular hours. Uh, all we lost, all the county taxpayers lost there was some, some work that they could have been d- doing otherwise. I have a different opinion on the equipment, because I think there are a limited amount of hours that, and usage that we can get out of the equipment, and if we're burdening them on somebody else's, although it is our problem, because it's in our county, uh, so I, you know, I, I see that point too, so. But I, I would think, let's decide it. What the heck, why, why wait?
I agree.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You have to be very careful of, you can't really come out and deny or say we're not going to accept it, because you have too many road districts, townships, cities, they're all involved. And if the county says not, we're not going to accept any money, you're going to shut the door on all those other entities that have an opportunity to claim expenses, because the county as a whole is what declared it, the disaster. So-
Well, I'm not saying-
You've got to be very careful that you don't say, we're not accepting federal money, and then you're going to shut the door on all the road districts that have no money to, to pay for it, and, and some of the cities, and-
Hey, I could go do that if we could stop the city from getting some of that federal money.
But I think we should go through the process. Here's what's eligible. Uh, FEMA's going to throw some things out that they don't say is eligible. We'll get a list of things that are eligible, and then at that time, if you want to turn it down, you can. But I think we got to go through the process to ensure that the other entities have an opportunity to recover costs that they may not be able to fund as easily as the county.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
And the motion is to, as it relates to just supplementing into the emergency management budget-
Just so we don't fall into the negative on the two hundred and three.
Thank you.
If there's no more discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
I, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that is relates to Storm Atlas.
You what?
I'd like to make a motion as it relates to the other discussion that we had about Storm Atlas and the expenses. My motion would be that we do not submit for regular hours, and we do not submit for vehicle rentals. We, you know, overtime, repairs, um, those other, uh, directly related expenses, I, I can agree with, but that's my motion, that we, that we instruct staff not to submit for those two items.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for the purpose, let's have a vote.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, there is. Heine, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. When you talk about, um, the road districts and, uh, townships and things in that order, do you have an idea about how many of those have filed for, for any help from FEMA?
I would have to, Alexa could answer that. Do you know how many other government entities, townships, road districts?
Cities?
Cities. I believe it was in the sixties, sixty different entities have applied.
Sixty of them.
Sixty-some.
So, they're all lumped into the county storm figure at the end, and the county, I'm not going to say the county's going to get the check and we have to justify it to somebody else, but the, but it's a, it's, it's a countywide-
But I don't know what, if this motion passes, I don't know how FEMA's going to look at that for all the other sixty entities. If they're going to say, well, if the county turns it down, we're not going to allow it for any of them. I, I don't know, we've, I've never been through that.
So we can, you're going to have that meeting with them this afternoon, and you can get that information?
We could get it today.
I could ask them, yes.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I'm just talking about what we're going to have staff put on a piece of paper and submit to, to, uh, Storm Atlas or those federal guys from Washington DC with the briefcase full of money, um, to not include those items. They include everything else, and whatever the other government entities want to submit, that's their business.
Yep. I'll say one thing, we have a snow blower that we tried to blow that heavy wet snow. It plugged it up, we cleaned it out, we went through, we lost the hydraulics in it. We're going to have a thirty-eight thousand dollar bill to repair that snow blower that we're not charging any time at all to Storm Atlas.
Well, put-
But our rental rate for the past year was a hundred and ten bucks or a hundred and fifty bucks an hour, but we won't even be able to charge any hours, but we're going to have a forty thousand dollar bill repairing that piece of equipment that should be able to recover that. We can recover that through rental rates charged for the other things that we do use. I mean, we have repairs and breakdowns, we do not charge them repairs and breakdowns to the storm. They're charged back to the equipment to establish a rental rate.
But what would you have done if there was no FEMA? You'd have went out with that machine, and you'd have moved the snow-
Yep.
And it had broke anyway.
That's correct.
And people in Pennington County would have paid for it.
That's correct.
In fact, is, I'll give my little lecture, federal government doesn't have any money. It's our money.
True.
Now, South Dakota turns out pretty good on that whole exchange, but, uh-
But I, I could find an answer, better answer for you this afternoon, and then report back to you next, in your next meeting. Because it's going to be a couple of months before they get through the process, three, four, maybe six months, and-
So you have to have a, a meeting with each, each one of those applicants, and that each one of those may take a few days, a week, to gather any needed information. They need to fulfill that application for that applicant.
And then we can find out if there's ever been any other county or, or state that's turned down certain items in a FEMA declaration. We could get that information for you.
Well, I think, however this vote comes out, at least, uh, if, if the vote, or if the motion, um, is passed, at least we're given direction to staff as to what our position as a county is, uh, in, in receiving these federal monies. And if it doesn't pass, I guess we're given direction there too.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't disagree with what Don's trying to accomplish. What I disagree with is that we are too early in the process, and I would rather have the full picture to vote on and look at, at the end of the four to six months or whatever this takes, than to do something now that, how we might regret later. I, we, we kind of have a, a responsibility to the citizens to look at the full picture before we make a movement, in my opinion, so I'll vote no.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we, um, move this, uh, item to the next meeting in January, the first meeting in January, so we can have the information that comes back from the highway department and emergency management, any others that may need to give us information.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
We have a substitute motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, um, we'll call for the vote on the substitute motion and have a roll call.
Westbury?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
No.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thirty-two.
Substitute motion prevailed. Next item is a public hearing for resolution twenty thirteen, twelve seventeen.
Good morning.
Morning again.
Uh, this is a time we had advertised for a public hearing for, uh, received public comments on a resolution to revise the Pennington County highway system. Uh, what we're doing, we're deleting a, a number of roads from the highway system. This was approved in October of last year, and during our process of doing this, uh, we found that some discrepancies with the state highway, official highway map that they had for Pennington County. There was some typos, uh, beginning and stop points on roads were wrong, and, and, uh, distances were wrong. So, they revised their map as our resolution came in, and this resolution has to be approved by the Transportation Commission, and they did not want to give them our resolution because they revised their map to correct a bunch of these situations. So, they've asked us to, uh, submit a new resolution, uh, with all the, the changes and corrections, so that the Pennington County official highway map will coincide with the official state highway map for Pennington County. So, I'm back in front of you, and this is a time to take any public comments on the resolution, and with that, if you have any questions for me, I'll try and answer them or the public.
Thank you, Heine. Any comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I would move to approve the resolution to review, or revise the Pennington County highway system.
Got it. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
That's the resolution twenty thirteen dash twelve dash seventeen.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heine. Item fifteen has been dealt with.
Good morning, Mike Cool, Construction, Pennington County Construction Project Manager. Work continues to progress, progress very well on the, uh, new administration building, and, uh, in preparing for our eventual move over to that, we need to begin to, uh, get, line up some contracts in regard to things that will go into that building. One of those is the furnishings, uh, that will go into the building. Uh, the building committee's intent is to try and move as much of quality furniture from this facility over to that when is possible, but, uh, of course, we'll need to purchase new furniture for the facility. I have a proposal from Arc International to provide professional services in developing documents to help us procure, uh, the furniture for the new building, and I'm seeking, uh, commission authorization of that. The, the amount, the, the value, estimated value, it is an hourly contract, uh, estimated value is thirty-two thousand dollars. Currently, I, I have, uh, we have already worked with, uh, Arc International in doing some early, uh, evaluation work for, with us, um, in, in terms of the existing furniture and helping us understand what it might cost, uh, for new furniture in the new building. Uh, so, uh, I have authorized that work, uh, up to my, uh, my, the limit of my authority granted by the commission. Uh, so at this point, I need the contr- the commission to authorize a contract with them.
Mike, looking at this letter. Item one, it says by early June twenty thirteen, and item two says correlated in the latter half of twenty thirteen. Is that, are those the correct dates?
They are correct dates. The, the, the budget phase work has already been completed. That was work that we did, uh, to get information to the building committee in terms of, um, what was going to be needed for that new building. Uh, and there has been some design work. We are into that, uh, design phase of the-
So, we're, uh, this, this agreement would be a step beyond that?
Correct.
Okay.
Or would it be in conjunction with it? I mean, we're, we're not going back, we've already paid him the eleven thousand.
Yes.
And we paid him part of the design phase.
Correct.
So, the total amount of this whole, and-
Contract will not change.
Yeah, it'll be thirty, you're, you're cap'n' it at thirty-two thousand, uh, but we're, it's not, we've already spent some of that thirty-two thousand.
We've already spent some of that money.
And Mr. Chair, just a comment on, on that initial budget phase. They, they spend a lot of time going to every depart- a lot of time going to every department and figuring out what we had that we could move. So we have a good list that I, I don't think that our staff could have ever had the amount of time that it took to do that and, and still do the rest of their jobs. It was, uh, it was quite an undertaking, but it makes, I think, the Building Committee feel better that we at least have a base to know what can move over there. And that was the value for me of that first phase, is kind of figuring out where we're at.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just to note, one of the reasons we decided to do that was what's, what might be an acceptable piece of furniture for one person may not be for another one, or what isn't for one would be for someone else. And one of the things we didn't want to do is spend all of this money on a new building and then move a bunch of junk into it. But we also didn't want people to have, who have good quality furniture today, not to, not to take that with them. So, it was just an effort to make sure that we utilize what we have, that's still good, usable pieces of equipment, and that that isn't, we can leave here for the courts to use.
Any other discussion?
You talking about that old ratty furniture that we-
Yeah.
Judge isn't here.
I know, he missed out on that.
I've told him that before, though.
Oh.
Hey, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the Chair's signature on the Arc International Inc. Agreement for Professional Design Services dated July 18, 2013, for hourly work with an estimated value of $32,000 related to the procurement of furniture for the new administration building.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Item 17.
Good morning, Denny Gordon County Fire. We'll take another stab at this from two weeks ago and see if I can almost explain this this time, so KJ bailed out on me again, so. In 2010, County Fire had some cash reserves, we simply asked for a motion to take $250,000 and put those in what's called an assigned fund in the auditor's office. It's a bookkeeping, it's a technical thing for them, just so they know where those funds are at. They account for those funds differently. Through the years, through the past four budget years, we've used a lot of those funds for those projects, um, and some of those projects have changed because some other agencies couldn't participate in those projects, so it's just time now to formally, uh, remove that $250,000 from an assigned fund. And that's all the motion does, the auditor's office simply doesn't have to account for it in an assigned fund. It doesn't change our cash reserves or anything at this point, so. I think I almost understood that after KJ explained it.
And there's may or may not be $250,000 sitting there.
We've used part of that $250,000.
You've used it, so there's something less.
But they still have to show it on their books as $250,000, so it's, it's kind of-
KJ's coming back to help you.
Oh, good, I hope she's back there somewhere. So, anyway, but that's basically in a nutshell, so.
I don't know what you exactly said. This is basically kind of a cleanup motion from a previous reserve that's out of date and, uh, before we close books at the end of the year, it would be better to have that go back to zero, it's all gonna then ultimately be reported in his restricted fund balance because of course, he, he's not in the County General Fund.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Denny, KJ, um, this, is this just changing from one fund number we'll say to another?
Yes.
And not the ability to spend, but just move from one fund to another?
Right.
Okay, and so what happens if there's not $250,000 there and we're moving $250,000?
Well, actually, if there is, if the $250,000 remains there, this outdated motion, it ends up for us reporting his restricted fund balance as a negative.
But I think you misunderstood me, though, but what happens if there is not $250,000 in that account to transfer? Is there any problem with that?
It, it, it has nothing to do with, with cash, because all the fund balances combined together equal the cash, plus and minus the outstanding receivables at the end of the year, sorry.
Okay, that answered the question, thank you, when you said receivables.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to dissolve the 2010 $250,000 in assigned funds in the County Fire Fund.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Item B.
Second item is, uh, every year we have to designate how much funds we want to have in the, for the title, Secure Rural Schools Funding. We can adjust that a little bit, but after several emails between the auditor and Highway and Scott Guffey at Whedon Past and everybody, we felt that once again, designating 8% for Title III, 7% for Title, excuse me, 8% for Title II, 7% for Title III, and the remaining 85% would go to Title I projects, which is what we've done for the past several years, so. One thing you have to kind of remember is that these new Title III funds are much more restrictive on what they can be used for, for projects, so. And we have to do this by December 31st. We didn't get the note, email from the state until, I think it was Wednesday of last week, and we hurriedly got some emails going and got it on the agenda, so. So the motion there is, is, is before you, and then we'll report that to the state, and that just allows us, and I think Heine did some work, and it's about 490,000 total that Pennington County would get.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners elect to set aside 15% of the Secure Rural Schools and Communities Funds for Title II in the amount of 8% and Title III in the amount of 7% balance to go to Title I, correct?
Correct.
There a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, can I just ask?
Mr. Holloway.
Um, on the, on the Title II funds, I know Title III is much more restrictive, but on the Title II, really last year that mostly went to the RAC?
Correct. Title II funds have to go through what's called the Resource Advisory Committee-
Okay.
-which is appointed by the District Ranger here at Mystic Ranger, and then they pretty much oversee where those funds will go, and they take projects and decide, so yes.
Okay.
Mr. Holloway.
What, you, you said we do have some flexibility with how we designate this in the Title I, II, and III? What, what is that flexibility?
Flexibility was between 15 and 20%.
I see.
So we could have made it, uh, but the maximum we can put into Title III is 7%.
I see.
So we could have put 13% or somewhere between 8 and 13% into Title II. And we felt, um, going with what we've done in the past, 7% and 8% was adequate, so.
And I, I see that, because if we put a larger amount in Title II and then we give it to RAC, we have no control over where they put their, they decide to put that funding.
Correct.
You can hope that it might come back to Mountain Pine Beetle Project or some other project, but we don't have any guarantee of that. And last year that did not happen.
With RAC.
That Resource-
Resource Advisory Committee. RAC is abbreviated, it's just called a RAC Committee.
And who appoints them?
The District Ranger, uh, which is Esperance, Ruth Esperance. She prepares a list of people across the community representative, and then it gets submitted to the Secretary of Agriculture in Washington DC and-
And, and we can make a-
Yes, I believe the County Commission have a representative, and I cannot think who his name is right now.
I don't remember now either, but yeah, we do have-
It's about a 15-person committee. Roughly.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Already do, yep. We have a motion, do we?
Mm-mm. We do have a motion.
Motion, say.
Is there no further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 18. Have you been to here before?
I think so. I need to, I'm the county highway superintendent. First item is a RASDAC Bike Tour, which was continued from last meeting to get some additional information. This year's ride is going to fund the Ranchers Relief Fund, and there's gonna be about 150 cyclists, and approximately 30 of them will be on any one given mile of road at any given time. They're gonna provide three support vehicles with warning signs to warn the, the traveling public that there's bicyclists ahead. And they're not asking for any local law enforcement help, but they said they wouldn't turn it away. And then they went on to say last year, they had a little bit of support from the Highway Patrol on a couple of state roads in the winter area. They say they're gonna have about, the bicyclists they're bringing in are experienced bicyclists, they're used to riding on these type of tours, and I talked to the sheriff and, and he doesn't have any problem with it, so I guess we're looking for a motion to approve them a permit to occupy the right of way.
It's my motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Next item is a resolution approving the South Dakota Department of Transportation Proposed Functional Classification. What happens after each census, the urban boundaries change, the population changes. We've met with the city of Rapid City, representatives from the state of South Dakota, and they are proposing the attached resolution, uh, to, uh, do the functional classifications for roads in, in Pennington County and Rapid City. This has to go to the Federal Highway Administration for approval, that's why it's a proposed one at this time. Once Federal Highway approves it, it comes back, uh, to the state for final approval. We will not have to act on it again. Basically, the, I don't know, how many of you have been around, as long as I have, but years ago, we used to have the FAS system, Federal Aid Highway System, that got wrapped into a functional classification system, so a lot of our roads that we receive federal funds on, uh, now have a functional classification that, that puts them in a category that, where we receive funds. We've reviewed it, we're comfortable with it, and, uh, Highway Department would recommend approval of the proposed resolution.
Any questions or comments? I need, does this correlate in any way to this classification that you, we just adopted?
No, this is a separate issue.
No connection.
Uh, it will have, once you pass this resolution, it's gonna go back in front of the MPO Board, which is a joint board between the city of Rapid City and, and Pennington County and Mead County, and they'll review it, give their stamp of approval, and then from that point, it goes to Federal Highway, so, no, it's a separate issue.
Any other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion approving the, uh, resolution approving the South Dakota Department of Transportation Proposed Functional Classifications.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item.
Next item is brush pile removal, and, and I have to commend the residents of Pennington County. Probably 98% of them have, has cleaned up the trees from Storm Atlas, hauled them away to the disposal sites, but as you know, we have some people that absolutely refuse, and, and we do have some piles in the right of way, and we do have some limbs in the right of way that we have to pick up, and we're gonna start our, our, I'm putting a crew together to start our wintertime tree trimming and, and cleanup that we do every year. And I know there's some brush piles out there that are located in the county right of way, and my question is, being as the board said, it's a responsibility of all the residents to clean that up, either we go ahead and start picking them up, or I have to send some love notes to those people saying they're not allowed to push pile or place things in the right of way, so I need the commissioner's thoughts or approval on, should we just go ahead and pick them up, or are we going to try and pursue the issue and have the individual property owners clean it up? That's the question I want. I didn't want to go out there and start picking up a couple piles and the phone starts ringing and to the commissioner saying, well, we had to clean ours up, how come you're cleaning so-and-so's up? And I'm trying to derail that conversation before it starts.
Is there a lot out there?
I would say there's probably eight to 10 in the valley, and probably five to six out in the rural area. Uh, we do have a, our tree contractor's working right now, and he's come across some, some pretty good-sized piles that, that residents have pushed off their property into the county right of way, and we had a lump sum bid, and the contractor doesn't feel he should have to do that because it showed up after the bid, and I will be talking to our, our FEMA account managers this afternoon to see if there's a way we can amend that, that lump sum contract, or if the highway's gonna end up going out and picking that excess up, so. I just want to bring it to your attention, either we do or we send some love notes out, so that's what I need to know, how you want me to handle that. Public relations is what we're-
I believe Commissioner Buster had said it best. Treat all people alike. And we have, like you say, we've treated 98% of them alike, and the 2% don't want to play the game, so my suggestion is, is if we do pick those things up, we charge it to their taxes and let them pay it at the end of the year in their tax bill.
Absolutely.
I think, uh-huh. Then it has to be declared a nuisance, I believe, doesn't it, Dan? We'd have to declare it a nuisance if they don't clean it up, that's the only way we can get it onto their taxes.
I'd be more than happy to make that motion if need be.
And, and there's also something against the law to put stuff in the right of way?
Yes, we have an ordinance.
You got all the teeth you need.
Okay, if that's a direction, I will take photographs of these areas and get the landowner the address that we're pretty sure they came from, and if that's how the board wants to proceed, I will do it.
Do you want that in the form of a motion?
I would sure love to.
I'd make a motion to allow the Highway Department at their discretion, but if they decide to pick up brush piles in the county road right of way that was put there by certain citizens, that, that be brought to the commission after their brush piles are moved and declared a nuisance if need be, or whatever need to do legally to attach that to their tax bill.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
You got that, Karen?
Well, it does-
It might not be as long a notice.
Okay.
If, if we're gonna declare the nuisance, don't you have to give them, I-
If we're gonna declare it a nuisance, don't you have to give them, I would think you'd have to give them notice that it's a nuisance, give them an opportunity to remove it before the Highway Department removes it. What kind of timeframe is that, Dan?
I'm not exactly sure how it works if it's in the right of way because it's not on their property. So I'd have to look into that.
Then it'd be under that ordinance where we can't push pile or place things in the-
Yep.
Well, I guess then the motion to clarify, authorize the Highway Department to send letters to those affected landowners, and if they don't clean it up-
Whatever you need to do.
I'll look into it also.
Okay.
State's Attorney's Office.
I'll work with the nuisance office. You get that? Clarify, okay.
Are we clear on the motion and the second?
Just as mud.
As long as you understand it, I need-
I understand.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item nineteen. The appeal of the approach permit conditions. Is there someone here to address that?
Gentleman right there in front.
I believe there's a gentleman here. I can, they appealed the condition on there that we put on a right-hand turn lane. Since that, that approach permit got approved-
Dan.
I've had conversations with the firm, and also conversations with Dan Staten with South Dakota DOT. They did furnish me with the drawing that shows the approach is located approximately two hundred feet from the edge of the shoulder, was shoulder or pavement? I can't-
Pavement, yes.
From the pavement.
I believe it was two hundred and twenty feet.
It was two hundred, yeah, two hundred and twenty feet to the center of the approach. Dan Staten said that meets the state requirements. If in fact the intersection is signalized, the two hundred and twenty feet still meets their requirements. It meets the requirements of the city. So I believe the gentleman here today is asking that the approach permit be granted without the condition, and-
That's my motion.
Second.
Is that your recommendation?
I'm happy with it, as long as it meets, once it's signalized and it's gonna meet the spacing requirements that the DOT has, I'm fine with it.
Yes, and add that to my motion if you would, based upon the Highway Superintendent's recommendation.
So, Mr. Chair, is it going to be signaled?
The intersection's not going to be signaled at this time, but the approach is going to be far enough away from the intersection so that if in fact a signal is put up there, it still meets the requirements. And I'll let the gentleman introduce himself. I didn't wanna-
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Bob Gage. I'm with GBT Realty out of Nashville, Tennessee. We are the developers for this proposed project. We have, after we received the notification that the driveway approach permit was approved with the condition of the right turn lane from Highway forty-four up to the approach, we did quite a bit of research trying to figure out exactly how far we needed to be away in order to not construct the right turn lane. As far as DOT is concerned, and they've projected this out to 2035, they have no plans at all to signalize this intersection. Their base requirements to require a turning lane is three hundred cars per hour. This particular development will generate ten cars per hour all day long. And that information is based on eleven thousand of these projects, this same size store with this same configuration throughout the United States that are in operation today. So we feel very strongly that we are quite a bit below what the requirement would be for a turning lane, and we don't foresee it being any issue at all now or in the future. But as we've got it located now, we are two hundred and twenty feet away from the edge of pavement off of Highway forty-four, and that does meet the requirement if and when it ever, intersection ever is signalized. So basically, I'm here just to request that the condition be removed from the approach permit approval.
Now, what the motion is.
We have that motion, and we have it seconded.
Yep.
So-
So, Mr. Chair, may I make a comment? The issue has never been for me, turning in, how many cars turn into your business. The issue has always been the busyness of Highway forty-four. And the, at certain times of day, it is extremely bad, both coming down Longview and going in and out of Rapid City on Highway forty-four. And I just cannot support that because I believe we are creating a safety issue there. And I just cannot support taking away that right-hand turn lane. And given that, we have had, we have precedents where we have required other businesses despite what DOT said. But based on what the traffic is surrounding, in the surrounding streets and highways, we have required those turn lanes. So I just cannot support this. I believe it is a safety hazard.
If I may, one thing to consider if you do require, and if we are, if we do end up being required to build that right-of-way lane, or that right-turn lane, DOT feels like that it would actually increase the danger of that intersection based on, you would have two lanes coming off of Highway forty-four up to the approach to our drive. So whenever you have cars that are turning off of forty-four, either turning right onto Longview or left on the Longview, you've got two options there that you'd be turning straight into Longview with two lanes to choose from. The ones that are turning right off of forty-four would naturally take the first lane and then have to make a lane correction after they got onto Longview, which they feel would create more congestion in that area.
I don't see that reasoning at all.
Any other discussion? Any other comments? If not, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Okay, gotta wait a little. We have ten minutes, eleven minutes till bomb time, I think they call it. What's your wish?
Make a motion, and we'll take an eleven-minute break.
That, motion and a second to take an eleven-minute break. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried.
And we need a motion.
I'd like to come out of recess.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Make a motion that can go into a board of adjustment.
There a second? Motion and a second to convene as a board of adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good morning, Dan Jenison, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request thirteen seventeen for George and Robin Pendo and Tracy Maury as the agent, to reduce the minimum required lot size from forty acres to twenty-seven point two acres in a general ag district. And staff has recommended to continue this variance to the January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen Board of Commissioners meeting.
Why?
There was a mix-up in communication between the surveyor and the actual property owner in regards to even plating one of the lots. And so they're wondering, they're working out whether or not they even wanna proceed with the plat at all. And this variance request is in conjunction with a plat that actually went to Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission actually continued that plat to have those issues worked out before it comes back to them.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to continue this variance request till January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen County Board meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Another motion. To come out of-
Make the motion to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent calendar.
Yeah, the Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B is a road naming, Orville Davis Lazy P Six Land Company to name a sixty-eight-foot-wide common ground area east Watts Lane. An approval is recommended. Item C is a planned unit development review, PU oh-six-oh-seven, Black Hills Resorts Inc., Simran Park, and this is to be continued to the March eighteenth, two thousand fourteen meeting. Item D is a minor plat thirteen twenty-five for David Merchant and Davis Engineering as the agent. An approval is recommended. Item E is a minor plat thirteen twenty-seven and subdivision regulation variance thirteen thirteen, Tracy Maury and George and Robin Pendo, which is to be recommended to be continued to the January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen meeting. Item F is a layout plat thirteen twenty-six, Norris Peak Lodge, Arlith Land Surveying as the agent. An approval is recommended.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Can we ask a question? I don't know if I need to have it removed or not, I just want a clarification on one of them.
I don't see any reason why you can't.
On the road name, obviously this has been through the city, and it's also been through nine-one-one?
Yes.
On that road, Watt Lane, or whatever it's called?
Yeah, we don't bring anything forward unless it's been approved, at least recommended approval by the nine-one-one Emergency Management Office to make sure it's not a duplicate name.
Okay, and how about the city representative?
Yeah, city, we always run this through them also because it's within their three-mile plating jurisdiction.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda for planning and zoning as presented by the Planning Director.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item G.
Item G is a request for release of subdivision surety, letter of credit number six oh-four for Rob Hamrickquist. It was to, for the lot improvements or road improvements for lots A and B of a private road easement of Lot H, Sanquist Acres subdivision. Mister, this was routed through the County Highway Department. They indicated all the road improvements were done according to the plan submitted for that road improvements. And he actually recommended that the surety and the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, uh, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents be released by the Pennington County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Make a motion to release that surety as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is, item twenty-one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session for personnel and contractual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then a second to come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We are out of executive session. Do we have any motion?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that on January first, two thousand fourteen, Denny Gordon be placed at grade twenty-one, step twenty-three, Scott Guffey be placed at grade twenty-three, step nine, Leandria Hollinshead be placed at grade twenty-four, step seven, Dale Jenison be placed at grade twenty-four, step fourteen, Heine Jungy be placed at grade twenty-six, step nineteen, Michael Peterson be placed at grade twenty-four, step twenty-nine, Shannon Ripberger be placed at grade twenty-five, step ten, Karen Romi be placed at grade twenty-five, step twenty-one, Nicholas Strout be placed at grade twenty-two, step five, and that Russell Tinsfeld and Eric Quichers merit raises be reviewed in June of two thousand fourteen.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Items from the chair. Item A, I think we've already taken care of. Item B, the agricultural zoning building requirements, the way that's headed. Last week, I was in a meeting where the comprehensive plan for Rapid City was being discussed, and it's nearing completion. In that discussion, I asked Brett Limbaugh if whether or not there'd been interaction between the county office and their office relative to that comprehensive plan. And there'd been some, but not anything extremely involved. However, Brett did indicate that the consultant that was doing their work would be back in Pennington County in January of two thousand fourteen, and that they could arrange, if the schedule accommodated that, that they could arrange to report to the commission. And I know Dan Jenison has indicated in some of his communication with his Planning Commission that Pennington County may be looking at updating the comprehensive plan. So in that respect, it's my view that that would be an excellent time for this county to look at the agricultural zoning requirements in terms of what citizens would have to do in order to build buildings on some of these remote locations that are being required to do things that are definitely a hardship. But anyway, I just wanted to share that with you and see if there was any indication that you might wanna do that comprehensive plan thing in January. So if it can be arranged.
Mr. Chair, I am interested in that, especially after going through the ag tax committee that we have done. There's been a lot of indications of issues out there that kinda create conflicts, and I think we should do that review.
At least it's something planned. Dan?
I did immediately call over to the city to see if I could get ahold of that department. And I left a message, oh geez, probably a week ago, and I actually just got a call back this morning. I was not available. They just got a call that they had called back. So after this meeting, I'll be calling back over there to see if we can get this arranged.
Any other comments on this? Thank you, Dan. If not, we'll go into committee reports. We'll start alphabetically.
From the top or the bottom? Just, I'm sure everybody knows it's been in the news that the National Guard has had some troops come home from Afghanistan. We also know that they have been publicized, that we have some crew going out, some troops going out shortly after the first of the year. We have not a lot of activity at the base really, but there is some moving around of troops there. troops there and planes that are being replaced in the theater and some brought back for maintenance. Also, I had this brought to my attention last night. Sheriff Kirk will be told me that they may have room at the Voltec for a valley law enforcement office. And I think we talked about this once before, Don, when you were there, but I can't remember what the outcome of that was. I know we didn't do it, but would that be something that we should talk with them a little bit?
I mean, I think the sheriff could do that. We used to have one with the water, Rapid Valley Water, which is out off of Covington, I think it is, and I assume that's still in place. I don't know, but I don't know that.
Any further?
Well, I was just going to say that one of the things they are kind of looking for is they're looking for money, and if we take part in it and have an office there, then we'll be committing funding for building.
Okay. Well, that wasn't mentioned, Seesaw, I didn't know. As we've said several different times, and we can get it on the TV, so the people that are out there watching in TV land, we're having a chili feed benefit for the Ranchers Relief Fund this coming Thursday. We'll have it start at eleven-thirty and serve till one-thirty, and then start at four-thirty and serve till seven-thirty. So you folks out there in the electronic world, come one, come all, bring your money, just throw it in the pot and eat all the chili that you'd like to have.
Where?
All the money would go to the Ranchers Relief Fund, and it'll be at the event center at the fairgrounds, park in the east parking lot on the blacktop and come in the east doors.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Busker?
I went to an Association Board of Directors meeting in Pier last week. I've got some information on what their budget is proposed for next year, and I'll give that to Holly, and she can distribute some copies of that. There's also somebody from the highway department, well, the secretary came and talked, and there's some money available, different programs, but, and it's not free, it's not a grant, you got to pay it back somehow, but at zero interest. But the major thing is that he talked about again was the highway program is good through this year, or through twenty-fourteen, October, but after that, it looks like there's going to be monumental cuts. There might, the only roads that they may fund are the interstates, maybe some federal roads, but not all of the federal assisted roads, and it's going to get ugly for us.
Bridges?
Bridges. There's a half a billion dollars' worth of county bridges in South Dakota alone that need replacing, and we've got pretty good, we've got some of those. So it's getting serious. I don't know, we may, I know Ken's favorite, we may end up having to pass a wheel tax one of these years. And I hate to mention the word more tax, but...
Who's favorite, did you say?
But it's going to get serious, I'm afraid. And Commissioner Holloway brought it up, you know? If we want this country to stop spending money, we've got to stop spending money and come up with some other plans and what to do. I don't know.
Thank you. Commissioner Holloway?
I had a couple of meetings. One of them was the City/County Drug and Alcohol Programs Advisory Board meeting, and those meetings are held on a quarterly basis. You know, they seem to be doing very well. They kind of reviewed with us their client surveys and the survey, or the checks that they do on their counselors up there. Everything seems to be going very well, and I think that's a good, well-run program. The other one was, I met with the JDAI, the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative Steering Committee, last Friday, I think it was, and they provided us some statistical information on the amount of juveniles that are coming into the system and the number that are actually going into detention. We got an update from Lutheran Social Services, who is running that reception center, and everything seems to be going well. I mean, the good thing is, we're seeing fewer juveniles being held at detention, but the other side of it is, we're seeing fewer juveniles actually being brought there by law enforcement. We're going to do some checking, statistic-wise, to see if we can figure out whether the calls are just down, or whether they're intervening earlier on at the law enforcement level. But our numbers in detention are going down. That's the plus of it. The negative side of it is, obviously, you know, when I was running that facility out there and we had a hundred kids in there, your cost per detainee day was lower. As you put fewer kids in, I mean, and the sheriff has done some of this already, I mean, he's not filled a bunch of positions. I think they only have three pods that they're actually manning right now, but it drives your cost up because you do have some fixed costs that have to be spread over that fewer number of people. So that's the downside. But I think for us, I mean, what this hopefully will show in years to come is if we introduce fewer kids into the juvenile system, we'll have fewer people that graduate then to the adult system, and so then hopefully we'll see some number reductions with the Public Defender's Office, the State Attorney's Office, the jail, and those kinds of things, or at least maybe slow the growth down some. So I think it's all a positive thing with some negatives attached to it as far as the costs go. One other thing that they're looking at, that the sheriff is looking at out there, and he's going to put some budget figures together, is we had a grant for an after-school program, and this after-school program would run from the time kids got out of school until about eight o'clock at night, keep these kids, if they needed some tutoring to keep up with their schoolwork, they would provide that service to them, and Wellspring was the one that was doing it, they would provide that service to them, but keeping them occupied for those high-crime time areas, and these are at-risk kids. It's been a very successful program. The grant's going away, and so the sheriff and Lutheran Social Services are looking at if there's a way that maybe they can mesh that in with the reception center and the shelter care that they got out there. But again, we may have to kick a little money in on that, but the, if we look at the long-range benefits of this, and sometimes that's hard to do because you're still spending the money here while you're trying to reduce your cost in years three and four or five down the road, but I can tell you, I don't think locking them up was the solution. I mean, we've locked a lot of people up. When we had, when we built that detention center originally out there, we built it for about sixty-some kids and immediately filled it up, and we moved in there, I think, in about nineteen ninety-three, and by nineteen ninety-six, we were adding on to it. And had I known about this program, this Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative at that time, and got exposed to it, that's really when we should have started implementing it. But we've done what we've done, now we can hopefully come up with a new way of dealing with it. And the sheriff and I are going to meet and go over some of the cost figures, but we'll probably be bringing something to the board later on in two thousand fourteen.
Thank you. Commissioner Trowler?
Well, I attended the governor's address a week ago, Monday, at the Chamber of Commerce, and one of the things that is most noteworthy for us as a county, although there are several, but certainly our mountain pine beetle mitigation future is pretty tough financially because he did not put anything into his budget. Talked to legislators, I mean, certainly legislators are interested in doing something, and there is, the Mountain Pine Beetle Working Group will meet tomorrow, and they'll be talking about how to move forward to try and get some funding. The sequester and the storm really started our, really affected how the mountain pine beetle program went throughout the hills. Everybody got really started two to three weeks late, and that means that the money that came from the state for this beetle season, there probably will be some funding left. And at the very least, it would be great if whatever is left of that two million that was allocated for thirteen, fourteen could be at least put into the budget to be there for the fourteen, fifteen beetle season. You know, the thing is, we had a three-year plan, and the governor bought in on one year and now is pulling out on the other two years, and the reason it was three years is that we were building the effectiveness, and so now that effectiveness is going to be minimized. We're not going to stop, we're still going to go forward, but it makes a difference, and so there will be a real effort made in Pier, and I think we will, depending on what happens there, see some changes in our budget because we can't spend what we don't have, so.
Mr. Chair, I did have one other thing, too, and I forgot about until just now. I have the honor, I'll call it, of sitting on John Thune's West River interview team for the kids that are applying for positions at the military academies. We had those interviews on December third, and he held them here and in Sioux Falls with two different interview teams. The nine kids that applied here, basically every one of them could be in a military academy somewhere. Out of each one of the military academies this year, John Thune has two appointments to each one of them, and so those two appointments of each one will come from across the state. But there was a couple of fantastic young ladies that we interviewed here that I'm sure will, one of them wind up in Annapolis, and the other one at the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs. Both of them will do a fantastic job, but the others were really good candidates also.
I have one more thing, too.
Yeah.
Both Mini-Haha County and Fall River County commissioners from there were very interested in our anti-texting ordinance, so I'm sending them copies of it. So maybe we are getting a little bit of momentum for the buildup for the session.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
This is not a committee report, it's just, I'd like to find out if anybody else on the board would be interested in this. Every month, we get a run on, computer run on outstanding lawsuit cases that we've got, and it tells you when it was filed and who the claimant is, and just a few words as to what the cause of the action was. I would like periodically to have, you know, maybe Jay or somebody from the State Attorney's Office could do this for us. We wouldn't necessarily have to bring in the outside counsel on this, but just have somebody come in and review these with us and say, this is what the situation was with this, this is where it's at, here's how we think it's progressing.
And explain what some of those columns are.
Right. Well, I think I know what the columns are, but, you know, and I used to do that with the ones that were filed against me on a fairly regular basis, but I think, but there's a lot of them on here that I don't know anything about, and it would be interesting, and I think the board should know what those are about and how they're progressing.
I see Holly making a note, so I think that can be arranged.
And obviously, it would be an executive session because we'd be talking about cases, but if we could find a time, maybe when we've got a light schedule, if we have those, and put somebody from the State's Attorney on that, I think it'd be very beneficial.
Anything else? If not, the next item is items from the public. Try the one from the public that wishes to address the commission.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion and a second. What might that motion be?
That would be to adjourn.
And the second understood that?
Yeah, I think so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're adjourned.